Pledge allegiance by Holly Murray, invocation followed by Commissioner Truman Tinsley the third.
Please.
Pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most gracious heaven, I call the board here today to ask for your blessings and guidance in the performance of our duties as elected officials. We pray for strength, love, knowledge, and understanding. Help us to recognize and solve the problems that are presented. Make our solutions fair and just to the best interests of everyone. Help us to overcome our shortcomings and keep us united as a team to work for the better of the city and its people. We pray in our name.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here tonight. We start off by approval of the agenda, and we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Mr. Tinsley with the motion, Mrs. Murray with a second. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Five, zero. First item tonight, under Presentations and Delegations, we have the privilege of recognizing Dr. Grant Keller, Director of Watershed Management. This is the 2021 Annual Strongest Link in the Chain Award recipient. Director of Public Works, Chris Walker will address.
It's my great honor to introduce my own, pretty much the only boss I've ever had in my life. I've been here for twenty-six years. So everything that's good about me and bad about me, I guess, kind of blame it on him or thank him for it. I'm gonna read this, I just lost it, so I'll look back up.
He was my first boss.
He was? How'd that go? It's a little long, so just, yes sir, please allow me. For the 2021 Annual Strongest Link in the Chain Award, I'd like to nominate Frank Keller for his loyalty to the dedication to the watershed management operation as well as the city's functioning body as a whole. His big command and recognition. Dr. Keller's vision for the direction of city water, wastewater, stormwater, and in the past public works operations is one that takes tremendous attention, detail, focus, and drive. For the past thirty years, he's worked tirelessly, often seven days a week, to ensure each area functions as designed by being properly staffed, funded, aligned with purposeful direction, while undertaking projects that improve life in Griffin. He brings an untold amount of dispassional knowledge, experience to his staff, particularly his deputy directors. He puts his employees in a position to succeed by equipping them with the necessary tools for the job and allowing them space to work, managing at a distance, and always guiding toward the end goal. His sometimes unorthodox style may not be understood by those outside the influence of his leadership, but is effective and appreciated by those closest to him. For as long as I can remember, Dr. Keller's been my boss. He, uh, give me a second. Dr. Keller was my boss. The past twenty-five years, I've been afforded the opportunity to have a bird's eye view of what it means to be a high-level manager of local government and its employees, and just what it means to be a public works director. For the past three decades, what Dr. Keller may encounter on any given day ranges from potholes, water shortages, drainage problems, employee problems, irate citizens, or worse, irate city manager problems. For the duration of every major storm event in the past thirty years in Griffin, you can find Doc at City Hall, regular staff throughout the days and the nights, working to ensure crews clear up the trees and the breeding field streets, left by whatever matter, emergency, whatever weather-related disaster we experienced. Over the past three decades, no matter what emergency issue, chances are very good Dr. Keller had it and insisting for finding a solution or being the solution in some form or fashion. There are few correct positions in every city where duty's never in. Dr. Keller's position as public works director and now as director of watershed management has been one of those. As a result, he's pretty much been on call twenty-four-sevens since nineteen ninety-two. And it's never been a problem to find him. He only goes home for a few hours to shower, take a power nap, occasionally eat, or shoot something. The best way to describe his routine is to say he leaves for work around eight PM and returns home every morning around four-thirty AM. His job as a director would be best described as a grind. I have little doubt anyone who's had the pleasure of dealing with Dr. Keller will agree. Nobody, and I mean nobody, enjoys the grind more than he does. Through all those years, he and I have had a few disagreements, a few battles, and perhaps a war or two. I'll admit it, that I'm stubborn, but Dr. Keller is unyielding. In the end, we both survived a lot of water in the bridge, a few demonstrations, and even managed to build a few things along the way. Dr. Keller is the only boss I've ever really had for any length of time. His work ethic, organizational skills, and his uncanny ability to operate inside political arena have served as a great model for me to use and follow in my own career. In the end, I believe he deserves this award for the difference he's made and continues to make daily to this great organization, for the network of relationships he's built across the state of Georgia, for his ability to stay laser-focused on projects that virtually take ten years or more become reality, but most especially for his impact he's made on the city staff and our community over the past thirty years. His efforts in those areas alone serve qualified Dr. Keller as the strongest link in this chain. As he's not only helped put our town on the map with his accomplishments, he's more importantly brought millions of dollars to this community through his efforts, wisdom, and insight. My humble opinion, I don't believe there's anyone in this organization more deserving the award than Dr. Frank Keller. Therefore, I ask if you're support in this vote for 2021 Strongest Link in the Chain.
Thanks, ma'am. You gotta give the chain too.
Get the jewelry?
I'll get one more.
Put the chain right in your neck, Frank.
Thanks a lot. Yeah, there's three things. The first thing is, one, thank the citizens. They allowed me to work here for thirty years. I want to thank you for the support for thirty years. And the third thing is, is I'm here because of my staff, not because of me. Y'all hurt me every Christmas. Without my staff, I don't have anything. So you afforded me the opportunity to do a lot of things and spend some money. But citizens, even though you have some bumps in the road, I appreciate them letting me work here for thirty years.
Dr. Keller, I remember the first, one of the first times I met you, I was the new Public Affairs Committee for Quois Club. In ninety-two, I came to you in a little trailer back behind the gym and said, I'd like to do a tree project at the park. And you jumped right on it and showed me what to do. And I remember the great flood in ninety-four, and even though you weren't over water wastewater, it was your job to make sure that the pump station didn't get flooded. You sent me out, you'll find sandbags and stuff. And so whether it's a little task that you give people or a big task such as running, you know, a utility, the way you enable us younger folks over our lives and stuff, you may not realize it, but you've impacted so many people in this community to be better people and to understand what service is because you're a servant for everyone. And from your childhood up through your youth, all the way through your service to your country, to your service to America and service to Griffin. You're not only, I think, the strongest link of the chain of the year. You'd have to go back probably to the strongest link of the chain the last thirty years for the city of Griffin. We're just thankful that you picked Griffin to where it's a place to live, work, play, and be a part of our communities. Thank you so much.
Appreciate the kind words. Just remember one thing, you're young people, you too, you gotta learn to pay it forward, okay? That's what it's all about.
Thank you.
Dr. Keller, when I first met you. Don't talk about it.
I did find, I found grain bags at the Siloan at Orchard Hill, but I came back in a sandbag. But thank you so much, Dr. Keller. And Chris, great job. Staff, thank y'all for supporting the nomination. Moving into citizens' comments. At this time, the mayor was applauding comments from the audience. Comments here relate to specific agenda items not listed on the agenda for a public hearing or to the concern within the jurisdiction of the city. Commission may need to serve the purpose of conducting city business and are not a forum with the unlimited expression of opinion. The mayor reserves the right to limit comments to matters germane to city business and may refer speakers to the city manager or other staff for resolution. With that being said, is there anybody on my left side, like to come before the board? Good evening, loved members. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I am Sharon King at one forty-three Comfort Lane Road. Can everyone hear me here, can I?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Go ahead and apologize if you see me kind of gasping for breath or shaking. I'm recovering from COVID. I'm not contagious, but my oxygen levels have stabilized. But I felt like I needed to come here this evening. So I'm here this evening as a community advocate. I'm not representing the Griffin Spalding County Land Bank. Everything I'm about to say is, are my thoughts and do not reflect the thoughts of the land bank. And I can prove everything that I'm about to say. I'm here to stand against the city. I'm sorry, I'm standing, I'm here to stand against Virginia Church as the city's assistant solicitor. There are many examples I can give of her incompetence, but nothing hits as hard as what she did to the constituents on Circus Street. Earlier last year, a resident on Circus Street was approved to purchase a lot next to her house. Sometime in June, trees fell from the land bank lot and crushed her cars on her property. Ms. Church went to see, take a look at the property and look at the damage of the cars, and the cars were totaled. At this point, Ms. Church saw a building sitting on the land bank property the citizen was approved for. Virginia said to the citizen, you don't say anything about the trees, and I won't say anything about the building. None of this was discovered until, to make matters worse, the resident there is older and she had to have somebody come out and clear the debris for the trees fell. And they were not aware, they couldn't put it by the curb, so they got it cited, cited for, for that. Let's see. None of this was discovered until the board members looked into it in October. But that wasn't bad enough. After this was discovered, Ms. Church called the police on the same citizen. And the following is a lesson of systemic racism. On October the twentieth, the land bank chair reached out to the city manager to see if the land bank would be cited for its building. At that time, they had no plans of citing the land bank, but recommended if the land bank wanted to file a lease report, they should contact a certain officer because they were familiar with the situation. Virginia contacted the Griffin PD officer that was recommended. Officer was contacted on Thursday. The Griffin PD officer went out to the constituents' home at eleven seventeen PM on a Friday to deliver the message that a building was in violation, code violation. This was after she had already sent a letter direct, to the direction of the board, to the citizen. Body cam footage showed officers running the resident's tag, even though the car was not parked illegally and no one was driving. This was because the police were fishing. You see, when Virginia contacted the Griffin PD, she made a point of calling the building a boom boom room, which comes with certain stereotypes of drug, alcohol, and whoring. I came to learn that the officer the city manager was recommended was because Chief Yates told her to contact this officer. Officer is part of a CAGE unit, C A G E, Criminal Apprehension and Gain Enforcement. Your police chief sent, because of Virginia, your police chief sent two CAGE units at eleven seventeen PM on a Friday night to make a citizen aware of a civil matter that the citizen was already aware of. And now the person who caused harassment of our citizens and turned a blind eye to code and zoning violations and even caused zoning violations, I'm sorry, code violations yourself, wants to be assistant solicitor. We deserve better, Griffin deserves better, when someone fails in one area of government, then they do not deserve a chance to fail us again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Is there anybody on my left, like to come to the board? Is there anybody on my right side, like to come to the board? Moving into public hearing. Public hearings are conducted to allow public comments on specific advertised items such as zoning ordinances, policy development, operating budgets, and other legislative actions to be considered by the city commission. Tonight, we will receive comments regarding the request for a special use permit to allow a place of assembly in the central business district where property located at two twenty East Solomon Street. Director of Planning and Development Chad Jenkins will address.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good to see you again. So this is, as indicated, a special use permit for a place of assembly at two twenty East Solomon Street. The applicant is Josh Abernathy for City Church. And they would like to use the existing vacant structure for their church, which will conduct services on Sunday and provide space for events and promote downtown business development. The parcel is Zone C, Central Business District, or CBD. And the request does comply with all the special use requirements and all the requirements for a place of assembly, except for one. It does not meet the minimum two acres that's required for a place of assembly as the property is point eight-six acres in size. It does have sufficient parking for the use that is requested. Staff is recommending conditional approval of the request with the following condition that the applicant shall apply for a variance from the minimum two-acre lot size requirement for a place of assembly. On January the tenth, the planning and zoning board also recommended conditional approval with the same staff condition by a vote of approval. Do you want to have to answer any questions?
Any questions from commissioners?
I, I, just for the record, I did ask a question earlier about the impact of having a place of worship in the downtown area as it pertains to like restaurants and the alcohol license and stuff. And was told that as long as those occur in the entertainment district, then there is, there won't be that impact. Okay. So that was the only concern I had as it pertained to the events that we're trying to have in the downtown area, so. And then the other thing, as I'm looking at the map, the, the, because I was looking at it real loud, the parking is not paid currently, right?
Correct, they're, they're working on a parking plan. And actually, in the information that was supplied in the application, they kind of show a rough conceptual of kind of how they would lay out pretty onsite parking spaces. And then actually, they'd have access to on-street parking as well, and they're working on a base so the neighbors will.
Okay, I'm looking at the parking diagram I have now, but I just want to make sure. Okay, perfect.
Any other questions from board? This is a public hearing at this time. Is there anybody in the audience that has a comment for or against or have any questions? Anything else from the board? Moving into the consent agenda, consider the minutes of the city board and commissioners' regular meeting on January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Do we have a motion to approve? Mr. Tinsley with the motion, Mrs. Murray with a second. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Six, zero. Moving into the regular agenda. Consider a request for a special use permit to allow place of assembly in the central business district, CBO, where property located at two twenty East Solomon Street. Do we have a motion to approve with the average up low with a variance of minimum two-acre lot size? Is that correct? Motion by Ms. Murray, second by Mr. Tinsley. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Six, zero. Item five, lifting the table to consider a resolution. Making an appointment to the office of Assistant Court Solicitor as well as approving compensation at set position. We have a motion to lift from the table. Mr. Tinsley with a motion. Second by Mr. McCord. All in favor, lifting from the table, please signal by raise your hand. Six, zero. Taking nominations for the appointment of the assistant city manager and compensation packages. I'm sorry, solicitor, thank you, court solicitor. Do we have nominations? I'd like to nominate Tom Kirkbride. Do we have the other nominations? Do we have nominations to, the motion to close nominations? Mr. McCord with a motion to close nominations. Do we have a second? Second, Mr. Tinsley. All in favor of closing nomination affirming the appointment of Tom Kirkbride, please signal by raise your hand. Six, zero. Item six. Mr. Brock is not here, so we can skip over appointment of P and Z board member. Item seven, rescind the appointment of Kenneth Moore as representative of the planning and zoning board for District Three and appoint a representative to the planning and zoning board for District Three. So do we need to make a motion to rescind, or does she just make the appointment?
I think she needs to make a motion to rescind.
Okay, so Ms. Murray with a motion to rescind the appointment. We have a second by Mr. McCord. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand, rescinding the appointment. And at this time, it's six, zero. And at this time, Mrs. Murray, you have an appointment for District Three.
I would like to nominate Earl Shivers.
Okay. And so you're appointing Mr. Earl Shivers as appointment for P and Z board for District Three. Moving on to item eight, consider a resolution to amend the city or Griffin's FY twenty twenty-one, twenty-two operating capital budget in the amount of eighty thousand two hundred sixty-five dollars to recognize additional revenue from motor vehicle title, added room tax tab two, and to appropriate funds for additional expenditures. Do we have a motion to approve? Ms. Murray with a motion, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Tinsley, all in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Six, zero. Item nine is consider a consulting service agreement with Evergreen Solutions LLC, lowest quote, for the compensation study, we discussed this today. Motion by Mr. Tinsley, do we have a second? Second by Ms. Murray. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Six, zero. Item ten is consider a resolution for Section two, one ninety, where the secret permit of the Griffin Code of Ordinance to ratify the purchase of fifty pole mount transformers from Stewart C. Irby Company, lowest quote, the amount of forty-three thousand five hundred ninety dollars. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution? Ms. Murray with a motion, do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Ward. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Six, zero. Item eleven is consider the purchase of sixteen eight-yard dumpsters in the total amount of thirty thousand nine hundred ninety dollars from Waste Crew Inc. through Source, Sourcewell State Purchasing Contract authorized the mayor and city manager to execute any necessary documents to perpetuate the purchase of same and amend the budget accordingly. Mrs. Ward with a motion to approve, second by Mr. McCord. All in favor of the purchase, please signal by raise your hand. Six, zero again. And item twelve is consider on second reading a Home Rule Ordinance adopting six districts in the city of Griffin based on the twenty twenty U.S. Decennial Census. Do we have a motion to approve? Mrs. Ward with a motion, do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Murray. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Six, zero. Good job, fellas. Moving to city managers of court.
I just briefly, since it was put on the record a little while, let me just clarify a little bit of the accuracy in this statement. We did have a situation on Circus Street this year with the land bank in which they had placed an accessory structure on the lot that they did not own. That is a trespass. Because it's a criminal trespass and what they've done, it's a little bit odd than just a person trespassing. It's actually a piece of property trespassing. So I did ask Chief Yates who exactly would have the legal knowledge to handle something like that. He did suggest Lieutenant over the CAGE unit. And he did that because the boom boom room was actually mentioned not by Ms. Church, but by the sister of the property owner at a former land bank meeting. So we didn't make up that terminology. I didn't know that terminology. But a boom boom room is something known to some of our police officers because it is used sometimes for illegal activity. That is the purpose of sending somebody out there at eleven o'clock at night and not during the day because generally the activity goes on at night. So there wasn't any ill will, there wasn't any systemic racism or anything like that in regards to why it was done in the main room, which it was done. And I just felt like since that was put on the record today, it might be best to go ahead and rectify the comments that were made. On a positive note, I would like to recognize Dr. Keller and his service to our community. I hope that we will be able to recognize him further later this spring before he leaves us for good. He has assured me that he will still help me with any budget questions I may have after he goes in April. And thank you all for a productive workshop today. It was nice to sort of get some smart goals done and sort of have a good idea of what y'all like to see from us. And then also your support and what we worked really hard on last Friday. And thank you to the directors for all of their hard work the last couple of days. That is an exhausting process, but I think maybe with their being able to miss staff meeting tomorrow, they'll, they'll recover very quickly so they can get ready to go again tomorrow. So thank you for being here today.
Thank you. Mr. Whalen?
I really don't have anything further to add, but I would say we're well ahead of the game as far as our legislative reapportionment. I've had three calls in the last week, other city attorneys looking for assistance in legislative reapportionment office. The state said they were not able to take these issues up with cities sometime later on this year. I think y'all did great work in the process and come out well. We'll be following that, Secretary of State, very soon.
Thank you, Ms. Whalen. Mrs. Murray?
Congratulations, Dr. Keller. We have a long history going back, kind of trained me on how things go in the city. And I appreciate all the fine words of wisdom that you pass along. You still help me with everything that I ask for you still today. So congratulations and well deserved. And it's a great workshop today. I'm very proud of all the department heads, all the goals. And it's really kind of neat to, we can see the previous year's goals that those things were actually achieved. And we kind of decided that tonight just going through. And it's really neat to see that it's government, you hear all the time from people, oh, you can just talk up there. And that's just not true. We, we can actually show and you all deliver. And great job through twenty twenty-one, we're gonna have a great twenty twenty-two. And I'm still very excited to be here and can't wait to work with this board for the next three, three, four years. Four years, right? We have four years left. Okay, thanks, that's all.
Ms. Flowers?
Very quickly, one is about, if I don't ask now, I won't remember because I leave every weekend for you to ask. On our agenda on the iPad, is there a way that we can, you know how you used to be able to access each agenda item? That feature's gone forever and ever?
I have been asking you about that because I don't like it either.
It's incredibly difficult to track.
I think that's something that we're gonna have to get back on. I was wondering when y'all were gonna ask about that because I've done.
Because you can't just click on it and you gotta, you gotta go through the whole pile.
Yeah, it's, it's.
I forget every week to ask, but okay, so someone else is the one.
We have looked at it a couple of times, but y'all haven't really questioned it. And I figured out how to do it, so I just figured maybe y'all.
No, it's horrible.
Okay, we'll, we'll add that back to the list. We can fix it, there you go.
That's why whenever it's my turn to comment, I'm like cold on it because I gotta scroll back through everything to try to find the page. So that will certainly make them look quicker. And then congratulations, Dr. Keller. I certainly expected that when you said there were three things that you would tell us, that one of them would be at the end of the day. It is the truth that at the end of the day, he has been an excellent asset to our community. And I am very grateful. I, I think his description of you is very accurate, even in the part of our little comical. But this community has been greatly blessed to have you here, so I'm very grateful that you're here. That's it.
Thank you. Mrs. Ward?
Ditto.
Mr. Tinsley?
Congratulations, Frank. I've known you for four years, but it's been fun. You've been on for thirty years.
And just wanted to thank the staff today for a single, I think this was the easiest, the smoothest. I mean, it really, it really was today. It was not, nothing really contentious at all. Thank you guys for the update on what's going on with the city. And I think you guys are handling that very, very well, man. I'm like, Commissioner Murray, I look forward to this year. And I think we off to a very good start and everybody seemed to be on the same page, which is always a good thing. Dr. Keller, of course, a lot of you guys don't know because this happened circa nineteen ninety-three. Ninety-two, ninety-two, actually it was ninety-two. That was my senior year at Morehouse College, the class of the foundation of the nation. And Dr. Keller, I was working as a lifeguard at the swimming pool. And he attempted to fire me. And it sparked me to run for office. And because of that, the next year, I became the youngest elected official in the history of Griffin until Cora came along and booted me out.
Dethroned you.
Dethroned me.
And charged you on your website so that you couldn't say anything.
Yeah, it took it, took it off my webpage so I can call that distinction. And Dr. Keller, since then, became what I would say best of friends. He's probably the only department head that does not refer to me as Commissioner or Mr. McCord. He calls me by my nickname, Duke, and he just, he refuses. He's tried, but when he does, when he says Mr. McCord, I think he owes me some money or I owe him something. Something is not right, or we're being robbed or something. But I have enjoyed our relationship. The knowledge that he brings to the job is just amazing. He started out with the. He started out with the, none of y'all will hear himself through in that, when he started out with the rain text. And everybody was like, man, no, we can't. And he's like, no, it's storm warning. Like, no, that's a rain text. And all of the state, they laughed at us. They said, I never never worked, and that makes no sense whatsoever. That man was out in front. When everybody else said no, and now every other city is trying to emulate and do, imitate what we do, and they call in Dr. Keller, and he is the expert on that, and he's been all over to talk about that. So just that alone, just a guy willing to go out, take a chance, do something that's very popular at the time. And we all thought we would get voted out of office because of it, but it turned out to be one of the best things for our city and giving us some revenue. So I know that you, you probably gonna stick around a little bit longer, and you know, it's, it's hard to not have anything to do, but I want to thank you again for being the strongest man and being a great friend.
Let me scrape the record sheet. You were fired. Under the board, one of my mentors, Mr. Raymond Head, asked me to give you a second chance. So let's get that on the books. Mr. Head saved your job. So then I got elected.
So when I got elected, he said, oh my God, this guy's gonna try to get me fired. Never once did I bring it, and he told me, he said, man, you know, you never brought that up. Because after I got on the job, I began to see he wasn't as bad as they said he was. So it all worked out.
I will say you were the best lifeguard I ever had.
Now he said.
I told you that before.
We look forward to hearing about the reason why I got fired. That would be a cold drink somewhere. So Dr. Keller, congratulations. Thank you for your friendship and relationship and being there for us all these years. I was calling Kenny Smith on the way through Jackson. Looked over and saw him pulling into Jackson City Hall. And so we reminisced about 2004, when Kenny came aboard, and just, we were talking about where our community has come in the last 18 years. And it is amazing. You know, the word I use for today was seamless. I mean, it was just wonderful to work and see the reflect on what y'all accomplished as a team, what your vision, what your goals is, and how it is a seamless fit in terms of what we as a board want to make Griffin the best place to live, work, learn, and retire. And just very so proud of this community and look forward to what we're gonna accomplish this year. And this time next year, we'll look back and reflect on our successes and the opportunities that we're gonna create and keep moving forward. So again, staff, thank you for your time and what you do for our community, and we're very thankful and blessed to have you working with each of us. That being said, do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Tinsley, second by Ms. Flowers. Please join us and send a report.